School Board, March 6th, School Board Meeting to Order. Madam Kirk. So we have the School Board, we would like to welcome you here tonight. I'm Dr. Ben, we would add some additional reading. You're welcome.
Chair of School Board members would like to take this opportunity to welcome all that home. She is a senior at Kina High School. She's a Vice President of the Class and an Alleged Tori. Basketball for three years, she's run cross-country. She's a member of the MBLA, SCCLA, SCA, Federal Reserve Mentee Program, and Partnership for the Future. She's also volunteered for Higher Achievement and Richmond Animal Care and Control Center. She has also, over the summer, served as an intern for Dominion Power. As a high school student and humanite, she's very delighted to be here representing her high school in RPS. And what I don't see, and I'm not going to share, ask, post-high school contacts.
Okay, so I applied to about eight schools, but just recently I had received a four-ride to William Mary. So that's my second choice and plus it's free, so I guess I'm going to live there.
Hey, I'm Jerome. When I met you the other day, I thought that I liked you, until you said William Mary, Bible Mod is your second choice. But, uh, what a good conversation. Congratulations, I'm really excited for you, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Next item. We would like to also recognize former board members that are in attendance tonight. This Mamie Taylor from the Fifth District and this TGPEF from the Ninth District. We would like to welcome former board members that have joined us tonight. Next item.
The next item is item two, public information, having not had any other side of enforcement or hours, would you pleasure that today?
If we have any other members in the audience that would like to speak tonight, please come forward. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, five minutes, please sign in and state your name. So again, if we have any members in the audience, please come forward at this time. Thank you.
My name is Tom Hartman, I'm stating as an individual. First, a request of our passionate, exceptional Ed Hadfield. Please be clear about what any out-of-compliance infractions are specifically about. I would love to be sympathetic, but hearing that we are out of compliance with a certain law does not tell me how specifically we are out of compliance. Please be more specific. My real topic is strategic planning. I urge you to be very bold, and here is what I do not mean. I do not mean to do what everyone else is doing, only better. I mean to be bold in the sense of new, innovative, imaginative, striking, something that will make news, something that will make us national leaders. Bold leaders, not bold followers. Are we being bold leaders or bold followers? I urge upon you the unfulfilled intent of two point one from the previous plan. The group I worked with called this Standards of Experience, SOEs. The idea is that our students need certain experiences as much as they need certain classroom lessons. They need to experience the ocean, not just read about the ocean. They need to fly an airplane, not just read about an airplane. They need to learn about the animals at the zoo from experts and encounter with the animals. And not at the hit or miss whim of their particular teachers that particular year. Student experiences need to be designed and visioned, committed, coherent, comprehensive. So many children are missing out on the wealth of experiences provided by some families. It should be ours to fill the yawning gap. But when? Weekends, vacations, summers. By whom? Community groups, run and funded by community groups. The world loves children, it should be ours to facilitate community involvement. Not, 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 talk up community involvement while constructing a hundred impediments. Standards of experience, think of the experiences that most impacted you. Should they have been random, and should our children, two thousand seventeen, miss out?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Charlotte Hare, I am President of the Richmond Education Association. Tonight, I want to take a few moments to share with you some concerns that we have related to the proposed calendar for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. After reviewing this document and looking at our current document, there are about five or six things that are of concern to us. First, there was an additional professional development day added on August twenty-second. At the end of the first semester, there is no teacher work day. The February Professional Development Day is being proposed now for Thursday rather than a Friday, which we feel is not going to be in the best interest of our children. March the seventh, according to the new proposed calendar, is a full day of parent-teacher conferences, and it's in the middle of the week, which is a Wednesday, which also is not good for student learning. There are no teacher work days in the semester, the second semester at all, not even to our early dismissal. It has always been our position that teachers need some workday time at the end of each marking period in order to do the things that are needed to be done. So we ask that when you are considering this new proposed calendar, that you take those items into effect. And that you look at those things and see if we can't make some better choices and decisions for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there some way of those concerns or some resolution?
There's a third day response, and it doesn't end anywhere, so you're not taking action.
I just wanted to hear the impression I'm taking out.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Ben. I'm here today once again to address the issue of non-compliance regarding special education. I also need to point out that it is intimidating and highly inappropriate for police officers or office security to spend the whole size of public comment participants. It can send a negative message, so the Board may want to consider rethinking that to provide a more opening.
Excuse me, can you state your name?
Candace Lucas.
You sign in?
Yeah, I just signed in in front of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of Advocates for Equity in Schools, an organization that addresses school pushout. Once again, as I was stating before I was interrupted, it's very intimidating to have officers on both sides of individuals, especially young women that want to come up here and tell you their story of violations by school officials. So, the Board may want to consider that. What I did is I provided today the IEP of Stephanie Pretty. Dr. Ben and Dr. Boyd both falsified documentation to us. You do not have the whole story, this Board does not have the whole story. So my job is to provide you with the whole story so that when it goes to litigation, you can't say I did not know. You can't say I did not know. Fact, Richmond City Public Schools has violated numerous federal guidelines regarding illegal disciplinary action taken against Ms. Stephanie Pretty, a Thomas Jefferson High School senior with autism. The district also violated your own policies regarding addressing attendance issues as outlined in your own student code of conduct. You did not even comply with that, the school district, the school staff did not even comply with that. The packet that I've given you outlines every email, every document that we sent, every email, every time we requested an IEP meeting with Dr. Boyd, said we didn't, she lied. That's not true, we requested almost seven times to have an IEP meeting, she just didn't respond. But mysteriously, today, Stephanie gets an IEP invite from a teacher at Huguenot. For the first time, someone sends something. And my question is, how can you have an IEP meeting at a school that a child isn't even enrolled in? That's not possible, but you guys are forcing this. I want to make sure that this Board knows or should have known all the violations that took place. RPS agreed to provide an escort for Stephanie between classes due to issues regarding seizures that she had. RPS did not provide that escort. You did not provide that escort. But you said she skipped class, so she skipped class twenty-six times, that means you did not provide that escort twenty-six times, you just told yourself. Okay? RPS agreed to provide Stephanie with several adults throughout Thomas Jefferson that she could rely upon when feeling anxious and overwhelmed. Stephanie routinely sought out these individuals, which included her school counselor, Ms. Johnson, and her case manager, Ms. Spillwellen. Neither staff member were able to provide the dates or times in which Stephanie met with them, or what she met with them about. Yet they still say that she was skipping class, even though these two individuals admitted on audio that she met with them on a regular basis. No one kept track of when she met with them, no one documented what she met with them about, this is a child with severe anxiety. And she went to her counselor, who was Mark Jackson from class, so keep that in mind. That a student that has an IEP and a behavior plan to address attendance issues is not subjected to the school's open enrollment policy or the code of conduct. An IEP supersedes both of those. Dr. Boyd knows that, Dr. Ben knows that, Ms. Lilly, you know that, you've worked for the Virginia Department of Education in special education, you know. However, this Board is still opposing student code of conduct over an IEP. And then you want to say that the issue is not an IEP issue. I gave you a copy of her IEP, in her IEP, there are IEP issues addressing attendance through power, the school district admits she got an issue regarding attendance, and they committed to helping her. Then they turned around and criminalized her behavior, had her arrested on December night for behavior related to her disability. How inhumane is that? How inhumane is that? RPS criminalized the student's disability and refused to provide effective evidence-based intervention for behavior documented in the student's IEP. You criminalize it, you violated the IEP, then you arrested her. That's what you guys did. You violated her IEP, then you arrested her. And you authorized this, and when we talked about the issue of change of placement, it is a change of placement. When you take disciplinary action against a child and you switch them from one school to another, this is the only school she's ever known. So when someone tells you, Ms. Page, that it isn't a change of placement, you need to call Hank Miller or the BDOE and get the truth, because he'll tell you the truth. It is a change of placement. And to say it isn't is lying and not being truthful, and it's not acting in the best interest of a child. She has never been a Huguenot, why would we send her there? She doesn't have any support at Huguenot, not like the ones she has at Thomas Jefferson that she sees on a daily basis. So to say that there's no difference, that's like me saying, okay, I'm going to take you from one house and put you in another one that I consider better, but none of your loved ones are there, none of the people you care about are there, none of the people that care about you are there, but I'm going to send you there. That's a change of placement. That needs to be addressed, so when they tell you it's not a change of placement, they're lying. I included an article from the Colorado Disability Law Firm that documents that it is a change of placement when a child with autism, when you change their schools without permission.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here to be the voice of this young lady standing next to me. Her name is Grace Bullock-Coefield, she's a high school senior, Richmond Public Schools has been an asset with Richmond Public Schools since attending Thomas Jefferson in the ninth grade. Recently, Ms. Coefield, okay, yes, my name is TGPEF, I'm working with Advocates for Equities in Schools and one of the team members that support Ms. Grace, Ms. Coefield. Okay, so this is the situation. You've been hearing a lot about another student who feels as if she was pushed out of Thomas Jefferson High School. I stand before you to tell you that the exact same thing is happening to this young lady. Again, she's been at Thomas Jefferson since the ninth grade. As of, I think, January thirtieth, she was put in a situation where she had to go around to all of her teachers and withdraw herself from their classes so that she could be enrolled over at George Wood High School. The reason why is alleged that she missed one hundred and thirty-one days of either class and/or school. Now I ask you all, how is that possible? Mom didn't know, mom had not been notified, the young lady had not been presented with an opportunity to go for an attendance team. So, what happens in December, she's put on a contract, mom's brought her in, mom says, hey, where are my notices? Oh, we got a bad phone number for you in the system. You've had my child since ninth grade, it's your responsibility that when I give you information to update the record, that it is updated. That's happening far too often in Richmond Public Schools where this information is not making it into the systems. Okay, so, this young lady, her mom did the right thing, took her and has enrolled her over at George Wood High School. The compliance coordinator at George Wood High School did not know she had a student with an IEP. This child has not been assigned a case manager. We don't even know if she's actually going to graduate when you look at the records that the school system has provided. So what we're asking is that the IEP meeting be immediately convened so that we can address the procedural and civil rights violations of this child academically. And I would just say this to each of you, that when your child goes so far and is about to go out into the world, this is not how you want it done. She should not be pushed out. The adults that made this decision, as a matter of fact, I sent an email, I got a response from Dr. Boyd, and she says, we'll get you the answers. You can't get the answers after the fact. What evidence did you use to say that she needed to be sent to her zone school? So I'm saying that what needs to happen is immediately an IEP needs to be convened so that all of the issues that have not gone addressed can properly be addressed. And this child can be made whole, and she can enjoy her last four months of education with Richmond Public Schools.
Thank you.
Hi, love, my name is Grace, I just wanted to try to know that, um, I just feel like I was being picked on basically over everything at DJ, because me and my first boy had like a bond. When we had a father now, then after that, it was just constant, constant, crazy, crazy, that there's no way I've been there for four years, and there's no way I missed a hundred and twenty, something like that. It's impossible. And even if I did, or I didn't, I got passes for my side, like this, let me out, you let me confidently pass, I showed him the pass, you don't have the pass, you can go. And then he asked me, I had a pass, George Wood is the kind of place that I want to be, we don't do nothing period in that school, nothing at all. I don't want to go, I'm like, two days, man, when I'm two, three, forty, the coast go. But they let me come anyway, it was like, I'm just not going to be anything yet, it's just not the place that I want to be, and I just hope I can return and go back and spend my last year at DJ. When I was, for three years, I was president of my school, like, my last year, it ain't just coming soon.
Shame on you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Shame on you.
Good evening, Dr. Ben and School Board officials, I'm going to make this very brief. I have one issue and one comment to make. My name is Malaya White. I have one issue and I have one comment to make. My issue is that I know that you are a new school board, and what you need to look at is the open enrollment process. The open enrollment process closed in November of two thousand and sixteen. And this is for the year, we're going to start in September. So you tell me if that is fair and equal to every child in the city of Richmond. Now, I have a child that, I have two children, but if I wanted, I have two elementary, two elementary schools in my district, Second District. I called and said if I could, when is open enrollment? It's already closed, it closed last year in November. Here, we haven't even started school in September, we just getting through this year. So what I'm saying to you, you either need to revise it or shut it down. Because it is not benefiting but certain people, whether it's your friends, whether it's teachers, whether whoever it is, but it's not benefiting everyone. And if I have to come down here and fight for equity, then that means that it's not equal, and I will continue to fight for that. Now, my next comment that I would like to make, I know that you all are taking Third District interviews. I would love for you, in your hearts, in your mind, to choose someone who can deal with the culture in Third District. It's not even Second District, but we have Third District children going to a Second District school. I haven't seen anyone in that Third District in over eight years. Let's find someone who can deal with the culture. I'm not concerned about your MDs, MS, MBAs, or doctor degrees, because that's your accomplishments, and these people who are going to come to this town. I'm concerned about the children, what are they achieving? Nobody's worried about who's achieving in giving court, give me someone who can walk in giving court. At least, put the courage together, get a PTA, that's what I'm looking for. And I'm going to close on this, and I'm going to continue to look at the open enrollment. You're already talking about overcrowding, this is one of the reasons why it's overcrowding. When you already have a seventy-pupil backlog in one school, and the school you haven't even started in June, and we're just becoming in September, and we haven't even got to June yet. So who's children I need? We need to go back to the basics. The zone that you're in, that's the zone that you go to school to, unless you have a parents, just like in Chesterfield, just like in Hymnical, Melville, yes. Do you have a disability? Yes, but if everybody, anybody, la di la di, you go to any school, that's unacceptable for a board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, please. My name is Alfreda Bullock, I'm a fan of the greatest Bullock color field. I was very, very bothered by how she was treated. All of my children have gone through Richmond Public Schools, and all of them have been successful. And for Grace to go through what she's gone through, no, she's not perfect, no, she's not, you know? But at the same time, I really believe that you guys could have worked around her in a more manner than pushing her out of a community that she has always been. Three and a half years, June, his graduation, since she's been over at George Wood, her whole attitude, everything, her self-esteem has come down. Don't want to go to school, don't want to go in the building, mommy, the school is draining me, we don't do anything. I still big difference. And I pray that you guys will reconsider how we turn back to the community that she knows, so she can graduate with us, so she can see after she graduates. Because I believe that this move that has happened, her mindset is not wanting to go forward after she graduates. She says, mommy, I don't want to graduate though. Mommy, I don't want to go to their farm, mommy, I just feel that she was a failure, not just her, many others. And I just pray that you guys will reconsider, and that does my daughter, but the others as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Roberta Bullock. I don't know what to ask, because I still kind of got no answers on why the conference twenty-six track meet was canceled. We have track coaches to come up there, we have family members and everything, and I have got no answer, I want to know for sure, someone give me some answers, I want to know for Dr. Ben. When you have a position, and this is what I'm saying, why I got so much passion for athletics. Athletes gave me the opportunity to be somebody, to be successful. I got to see the world, I got to go to Hawaii, I got to go to Puerto Rico, I was a C I L A champion, still is a C I L A, three-time C I L A champion, South Carolina regional champion, a national champion. I had those opportunities because of athletes, because I played for Johnny Kenny and Howard King, I played football on the track. Nobody would ever give me a chance, but North State gave me a chance because of my athletes. I had academics, but I didn't want to go for athletics, I wanted to play football. And ultimately, other children are losing opportunities because we have adults making decisions for children that don't get the opportunities to do things that they want to do. And to go for the whole season and then don't have the conference championship because the A's and Richmond Public Schools made that decision, it's ultimately, it's devastating. And I'm trying to tell you, only one A E agreed to have a track meet, and that was Unpoetway, his name is Kerry Gray. You want to call him? Go call him, talk to him, he will tell you. It was a travesty, and I got witnesses, everyone used to see, it was, I was like, whoa. It was advertised in the newspaper as a conference, um, track meet, the championship, and it wasn't that, we're the only one in the state, the absolute state, that did not have a conference championship. And ultimately, it was detrimental to the teams that had opportunities, that was one meet that they missed when everybody else had an opportunity for them to go to regionals. They didn't have an opportunity for regionals because of this. That last, and these children was devastating, and they didn't know about it until they got to the meet, there wasn't a point. I got plenty of parents that were telling us, they said they had called, I done talked numerous parents, they had called. They didn't call. They haven't gotten any calls back from Dr. Bennett, from anyone in the administration. So... Oh. Yes, that's true. They don't call anyone back. And ultimately, this is, this is a travesty. It is a travesty that we have administrators that we paying over two hundred and some thousand dollars to, to leave and he's not leaving. Ultimately, these people, we need answers, and I want answers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
The next item is I have three academic improvement amendments, three point zero one. Receive legislative update.
It's my understanding that because we also missed sessions, that they would not come back and present it. So we're going to be continuing to do it. So, uh, I don't think they have a lot of four years left.
Yes. The next item is three point zero two, receive a fourth of the mayor's education update.
Board members. The legislative update team will not be here tonight. Um, Ms. Carter and Ms. Ballow will be meeting with them as far as next steps for the process. Um, the session has ended. But we want to, um, just stream, well, perfect, perfect the process. Make it more effective, um, for the district. As I reported on, I'm sure that they would, if access were afforded, then it's going to be session. Or to follow up on, I actually have an agenda to set. And for our staff to be in session. Thank you. Ms. Carter, do we have an update for the mayor's compact?
There's been no additional activities since our last meeting. I know the city council actually voted into a course of compact concepts today. After they were downstairs working on that, it's moving in this. As though I mentioned again, we'll have city councils approve the version of the compact. We'll come back and report back to the board. So they, we have our approval.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, ma'am, gentlemen. I think all my colleagues are kind of in the fact that Mayor Stowe presented his budget to city council today. And, uh, the mayor did precisely what, uh, what he committed to and what he, uh, he shared with us. And I think it's a, I think it's a budget that, uh, it's a budget that, uh, rich and public schools, uh, should support and endorse. And a budget that constitutes a significant year, year of year increase as it relates to funding for rich and public schools. Look forward to collaborating with the city council and, of course, continuing work with the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Young, for that explanation. And Mr. Myers, I believe will providing, will be providing the board with an update as far as some dollar from the mayor.
Yes, ma'am, I will also. I'll definitely be there.
Thank you. So the next item?
The next item is three point zero three, receive the student code of responsible ethics.
Good evening, Dr. Superintendent, Ms. Superintendent. School board member is Dr. Bennett. Today you receive the student code of responsible ethics, which is our best of the version of a standard of student conduct. The code of regulation requires that local school boards and shorter policies are developed relative to standards of student conduct and attendance and enforcement of those procedures. And as such, a team annually reviews our standards of student conduct for score to make sure that the document is up to date with, um, current federal and state guidelines relative to conduct and behavior. And in the memo that's been provided for you, we list the members that participate on that committee. It is a multi-disciplinary team, so there are presentations from teacher representatives, administrative representatives, um, state hand security or hearing office. Uh, we have a R.E.A. representative. And we also have feedback from the parent advisory committee. And on your memo that you'll see, that you do have a very, um, tight timeline that's very detailed in terms of how we move forward with the changes that I will be, be working for you today. So you should have a memo that looks like this. And it'll just, on the second page, it lists the timeframe. Today you are receiving, excuse me, the student code of responsible ethic. And we will follow the process moving forward. We will have stakeholder input via designated email address from March thirteenth through the thirty-first. We will have the ability to make additional revisions based on the input from stakeholders from, that will be revised on April twenty-first and be made available to you at this time in your weekly report. On May first, you will, we will begin coming for you for you to approve or to take action on our student code of responsible ethics. We plan on posting the document both English and Spanish to our website on May fifteenth so that families and students will have access to it early, well before the start of the next school year. And hard copies will be made available in schools and at certain central office locations for those families who wish to have a paper copy. We'll now briefly move forward to our summary, which is a table. This is how that for you, that you have in front of you and is also posted on the screen. On the screen, you'll be able to see the color of your document is in black and white, so please do forgive us for that. We've notated everything that has been changed, any changes, additions, or deletions here for your ease of access. But we have also provided you with this thick copy, this, the whole entire document. I will start by saying that based on our feedback from our parents, there will be an abbreviated version of this document. We do know that seventy-four pages can be a little bit daunting, um, for folks and it's a lot to read and to digest. So there will be a, at a glance, um, that's easier for families to digest than for the students. Our cover page and superintendent's message is revised annually. So you'll see that and you'll take it on your table. On page eight of the document, we made some revisions just so the folks would know that communication regarding student discipline will go to parents with the exception of adult students. If the students are eighteen years older, that communication will go to them unless there is some documentation that the parent has guardianship for some other type of legal, um, responsibilities for that adult student. So that was an additional insertion there just to make sure the families were aware of that. Uh, while we want to make sure to work collaborative with families and we know that parents play a vital role, we do have to be mindful of the confidentiality pieces for our next students. Moving forward, you'll see some changes. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a procedure in place to allow eighteen-year-old students to opt-in to, uh, to notification when the parents decide for them? Whether they've got guardianship or some kind of forms that can be used?
Good question. So what will be doing? We discussed that as administrative team. Will we provide some documents to families, answer students, to make them aware? Presently, it isn't as crisp and clean as we would like it to be. Uh, we know as a parent myself, I certainly want to be involved in my child after dinner. We don't want parents to be cut off more if we can't communicate with them. And so we will be putting that process in place, not only to those students who are eighteen, but those students who are approaching their eighteenth birthday so that they can have some time to make informed decisions. And so the parents will be aware in advance. Thank you so much for that question. Um, the pieces right there on our levels that they are mentioning, consequences. Many of those things were some changes in, um, the level of infractions. You'll see that rioting or attempting to incite a riot, those levels or those consequences have been changed. So currently, inciting a riot is a level three, from five, and it will be changed to four and five. So I won't, unless you would like me to, I won't read the document to you, um, so that you can review for yourself. And we have made notations of what the document previously was and what we are proposing that it be moving forward. Another piece that I do want to highlight for you in advance is that we do have some rotated slightly right here under section fourteen. There's documentation, um, to be a little bit more clear about the use of recording, audio, and video recording. Uh, we want to make sure that we safeguard students' confidentiality and so recording, audio, or video recording is prohibited. There are some additional, um, changes. Appeals previously were five days. Parents had five days, five school days to submit appeals. It'll be changed to three school days to submit appeals. And again, we want to make sure those things are received quicker so that we can begin to review those items and take action on those items as appropriate. The rest of the documents?
Ms. Carter and Ms. Cosby.
I just would like to understand the rationale behind reducing the number of parents having to do this.
Sure, certainly. So the team, um, after discussing, again, it's currently five days. The team felt that it was best for the school administration to be able to get those appeals quicker so that a decision can be made. Um, presently, students are highly school pending their appeals. And so if the parents wait till five days, there's five days students are out of school. So the sooner that administrators get that document, they can do the process and review it.
Those can easily count as part of chronic absenteeism also? So if we get to them often, they don't respond, they're tripping to the absenteeism of the student.
Are there systems in place to ensure that they know this is received? I can look in on a little narrower window in which they can, you know, maybe have some verification of this.
So it's from the date of the insurance of the, um, suspension letter? So you can see in the system that the suspension letter was created on, say, March sixth. So you have three school days from that time to, to receive that document.
Ms. Cosby.
You know, I think that the question was, what is, what, what are, what systems are in place to make sure that the parent receives the notification? Which is asking that because some of the, at this point, it may become, may be, maybe. And there have been some situations where parents have not received their, received the link or we saw changes in the addresses. So is something that's, you know, said, I'm just going to pay the address. You know, or are you seeing Clarkson Road opposed to thirty-one or the Clarkson Road? So what, what do you have in mind for that?
Um, so currently, the appeal process is embedded into the suspension letters. It's automatic. Uh, we do rely on having correct information in the system. Um, students sometimes will receive that information in hand when they leave the school, depending on circumstance. And sometimes it does have to be sent home through mail and sometimes it's sent with our family and community engagement officers. Um, so we can certainly make sure that as, particularly in the light of the change, that we really do a strong public information push to make sure that families are aware, um, before the midst of the situation so that they're aware of that information. Because oftentimes, in the heat of the end situation, you can kind of forget some of those different nuances about the end time line. So we'll make sure that we're very diligent about, um, particularly since it's proposed to be a condensed timeline, um, to really communicate that information to families. And again, all of the things here, I know I haven't shared it yet, but again, this is an address. We certainly, um, look heavily at the feedback that's provided. We will have a designated email address, um, for stakeholders, whether it's students, teachers, families, community members. And also the feedback for the team to review that information.
And this is Ms. Howard. So what you know now, this will be factored in.
Ms. Ballow?
We're glad to hear that we got some time to review this and this community input. I see that for the dress code, uh, item seven here, it says that students attire and parents should not be indecent. Then I see this, uh, this next paragraph below there, this next line, a couple of lines below there, which describes what looks like indecent clothing to me. Is that the intent for this to be a definition of indecent? Or is indecent going to be left up to the discretion of the administrators and teachers?
So it's meant to provide some additional clarity. A number of our surrounding districts, um, do articulate similar language because indecent can be very subjective. What I may feel is indecent may be very different than you. And so we're trying to add some additional information for both students and families to know. You can't come to school with a shirt with marijuana on it because again, that's, that's gross. You can't come to school with a shirt that has profanity on it. And that's very clearly articulated as opposed to just using that other descriptors that can be interpreted many different ways. So that was the intent. Um, but it's not just so that you will know it's not all encompassing, it's not exhaustive, it's illish fail. Um, just so your folks have a better understanding of what we're referring to as indecent or inappropriate if you will. So I highlighted the things on our table that are the, um, things that I thought would provoke the most conversation or dialogue. Um, and feedback, please do, um, as you review the document, please make sure that you do, um, feel free to share those things with us. If you have questions, we welcome your input. We will send the email address out to everyone. We'll be working closely with our public information office, our community and media relations office, to make sure we get that information out to all stakeholders.
So Dr. Bolt, do you want me to email you what I'm getting?
So the information, the information, we'll have the, the website and everything designated and sent out beginning March thirteenth. And that'll be available from March thirteenth through the thirty-first. That will allow the team to review those, to review that feedback and make any necessary revisions from April third to the fourteenth. Um, some years it varies. Sometimes the changes are minor, sometimes are more significant, so it requires more time. And then we'll have this document back to you with the additional revisions for your weekly report on April twenty-first. And we'll be, um, posting it to board office et cetera for, uh, stakeholders to see. And then we'll be looking for action on the first.
Ms. Ballow?
I think it'd be helpful to, uh, when we're taking a look at making revisions to, to store here, to, um, have some idea of, uh, the number of students who have been impacted by some of these provisions. Do you think that we could get that kind of data on a, on a district-wide basis?
Can you clarify?
So,
What you're looking for?
So, uh, how many times have students been, uh, been disciplined for dress code? Or, I guess we haven't really had this possession of community advice easier yet. But, uh, just want to know sort of what the, it's tough for me to, to imagine that you got it down to how many kids have been, uh, disciplined wearing flip flops. But I just want to have an idea of, you know, whether students are, are missing class or whether students, uh, you know, are taking out of class because of some relatively minor dress code infractions and things like that. So just to, just to know that we're not making our decisions in a vacuum, that we understand sort of what the impact of some of these decisions might be having on our students.
And one of our, um, our reports, we sent our last report that would be, um, legal as of January. And we'll provide an update, we'll have the standard disciplinary reports, reports that you all received are, um, sectioned out by infraction code, which is your B.A. fours, B.A. twos, all those different things. And it's also fractioned out by school. So you can see if there's, um, any more significant impact. You know, for example, dress code is secondary versus elementary, kind of parents have more input on the children. Where so we can look at that information. Um, and you do have the, um, beginning of the year through January, I believe it is, data will be provided and updated for you. Um, so that may be helpful. And if you want any clarity on what those codes mean, we can, again, we'll provide. I'll make sure we just. again, we'll provide, I'll make sure we just go ahead and submit the weekly report, is the crosswalk of what does BA four, what does that mean? What is FI one, what does that mean? So you'll be able to look at that information. But remember, as we shared in our discipline, our discipline summary, the disorderly conduct, fighting, or one of our top, and bullying are one of our top three in attendance, or the top three to four infractions at all our schools across. Disorderly conduct is number one.
Ms. Cosby?
Dr. Ball, just a question. If a stakeholder obtained you the suspension email, so how would the stakeholders want to know?
So what, yes ma'am, what we'll do is, as we did last year, we'll post the document, and then we'll say feedback, and we submit it to this email, so it's typically store@RPS.
So you're posting it on the website?
Yes, ma'am.
And how would you know that?
And we do, what we do is, we also send out a parent link notification, so we send out those, website, the app, we send that information out, so folks know how they submitted the information, and also what the timeframe of that, that window looks like.
Our Facebook and our social media posts is awesome. And Mr. Soapy, we have to tell those who we sent in the summer, and that's in our schools around here, to help to store.
And again, if you have any questions, please feel free, we want to make sure that you have all the information that you need.
We, our student representative, call that.
I have a question, you mentioned attendance and infraction, do you mean that students should be penalized for missing school? And so, what will the process be?
Thank you, good question. So what we did is, we submitted to the school board data about disciplinary fractions that have happened today, and we broke it out by infraction type, so fighting, bullying, attendance, which includes cutting class, leaving, school grounds, those are all attendance violations. And so, they can see the actual number of infractions by school, and also by infraction category. And so, when I said that was one of our top areas, when we looked at our data so far this year, disorderly conduct, the disruptive violations were number one, fighting and bullying ranked around two, and attendance was third for our secondary schools. And so, that means, we don't let that stay, these are some of our key issues that we really have to focus on. In school, currently, students are not supposed to be suspended for cutting class and things like that. Where we sometimes have challenges is when a student is cutting class, and they're told, Michelle, you have to go to class. And I say, no, I'm not going to class, I don't want to go to class. Then that kind of becomes defiance and things like that, and so they may get consequences or suspended for the defiance, but it doesn't bubble up to something else, because now in the hallway, I'm maybe fussing and cussing and things like that. Thank you so much for your question.
Ms. Young?
Madam Chair, I just want to commend Dr. Ball, if it relates to initiating this process, and I hope to work with the vulnerability in the next few weeks, the next couple of months, prioritize this, this issue. I'm very concerned for his performance, for the safety of our children, and I'm very concerned that we have some schools that are very unsafe. And so, that troubles me very much, very much. And there's truly, it's, I receive too many phone calls, and even pertinent incidents, and it's just unacceptable, and I frankly have no tolerance for it. So I commend Michelle and her team for initiating this, and Dr. Bedden, who are determined to effort to address this in the most conservative way.
And I'll say thank you on behalf of Ms. Dolan, due to some unforeseen circumstances, she couldn't be here, but our hearing officer, Ms. Dolan, does bear head this process, so I'll be sure to extend your thanks to her.
Next item, Mr. Concealor, see you for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, district schedule.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bedden. It's my pleasure to offer you the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Richmond Public Schools' proposed calendar.
So maybe that, Madam Chair, introduce yourself again in position, just in case.
I apologize, I just thought that was kind of long-winded. Thank you, Dr. Bedden. My name is Eric Rhodes, I'm the director of quick and on destruction. I'd like to apologize on this very close. The calendar committee consisted of various states members. I want to thank Dr. MZ for co-chairing this, as well as all of the committee members who served on this committee. The committee met place, and input was provided through email, as well as physical communication. The discussions focused on maximizing instructional time, mitigating absenteeism by reducing the number of two-hour early dismissal, and aligning, aligning to neighboring school divisions to reduce the impact on students attending regional governor's schools, and teachers who live in those neighboring districts, because of the challenges. Input was collected from stakeholder groups, such as student advisory committee and other groups. Following this presentation, the proposed two thousand seventeen, eighteen Richmond Public Schools' calendar will be placed on the RPS website for a thirty-day call comment period. I'll work with the communications and media relations office to ensure we get it out for every view as possible. And the public comment period, like I said, will be thirty days. Public comment will be taken into consideration, and I will return next month with a final review and approval. At this time, I'll answer any questions you have regarding the proposed calendar.
Dr. Bedden?
Madam Chair, just to fill in a couple of things, and Mr. Rhodes and Rose, we need full data, and one of the things that found certain things were placed on Friday, is our school attendance bump. So some things were moved away from Friday because of school attendance, both in some cases, employee and student issues, and the same was happening on some of our two-hour early dismissal. The DMO student, he had attended tables, and they were going to do some of those issues. And Mr. Rhodes might want to speak to some of that information, because that was a concern.
Right. And, and so, there was a great deal of discussion about, you know, reducing the number of shortened days, because students tend to have a, you know, a perception that shortened days, you know, sometimes considered to be a day off. And so, there was a concerted effort, like Dr. Bedden mentioned, to move that.
Okay. So thank you very much. And I want to jump in with the panel, Ms. Rhodes. I just wanted to reiterate, because Mr. Rhodes might not have been at the teacher and staff advisory council meeting, and that was also brought up at that meeting, so we shared, that was another group that we shared the proposed ideas for the calendar with. And that group was, they had some very strong feelings about the professional development days, which I think were shared with you, but they also had some comments about those two-hour early dismissal days. And so, some of the members of that group also were not in support of the two-hour early dismissal days because of attendance concerns. Yeah, so, so we took it away from, from Fridays, and we removed some of them, we didn't remove all of them. One may have, in October, I think, is associated with a parent-teacher conference day. There's another that is associated with, you know, giving teachers some more time at the end of a marking period, but there was one that was brought up earlier today by this chair that was removed, but in response to teacher concerns as well as student concerns.
Madam Chair, there's some representative of the teachers, like starting day period, obviously, with this more comments, and see if there's a different feeling that we can consider part of this process. We added changes based on the feedback, and then we get feedback out of this, and then we're back based on feedback, and changes in the current run.
Question, Dr. Kane. So, does this proposal address the issue that you mentioned a couple of days ago, or last week?
So last week, we asked if we could make sure that we added this calendar item to this week's agenda, so that it got in front of you, so we could get it out in time and fashion for public comment. And, and absolutely, yes. So at the same day, that was the day that we canceled after-school activities, but there was a group of, of committee members that agreed to go ahead and meet via teleconference, and so they did that, and some of the concerns were brought up there as well. There's a parent on that committee who has some feelings, Mr. Rhodes will be able to share with you, but there's been, there's been feedback from a variety of students, teachers, the committee itself, and as Mr. Rhodes already said, in aligning with other districts, so that we, sometimes we can align, sometimes we can't align. But the whole idea is to give them, give it a thirty-day opportunity to make their comments known, and their feelings known, and then we'll establish that, we'll bring it back to you, and then you will cast the vote. Thank you.
If you recall, I shared some information with you in the weekly report regarding recruitment and retention, so I shared the draft plan with you in the weekly report. So tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit more about specifically what our recruitment strategy looks like, and I just have a couple of slides to share with me, and certainly I'll take your questions at the end. So the information that you're going to see here tonight is a little bit different than what you saw in the weekly report, this is more of an extension of what you saw in that report, and also understanding that this is a draft, and it will continue to change and evolve as we move through the recruitment season. So really quickly, this was also in the draft document that I shared with you, the mission and vision of the Human Resources Department is committed to the educational excellence of our students, through the selection and retention of highly qualified employees, to foster a climate of inclusion, dignity, and respect, as well as provide meaningful professional development for continued growth. The Department of Human Resources serves as a strategic partner in supporting Richmond Public Schools as an employer of choice by attracting, retaining, and inspiring workforce of dedicated professionals. So really quickly, I wanted to talk to you about the compensation aspect of recruitment. I know that there seems to be an opinion that we are not comparable to our neighboring districts as it relates to the teacher pay, and so I wanted to share the data with you to show that not only are we comparable, but in a lot of respects, we're doing much better as it relates to teacher pay. What you're looking at is the starting salary for a new teacher, with zero years of experience, with five years of experience, and with ten years of experience at the bachelor's degree level. So what you have is Richmond, Hemerite, Chesterfield, and Hanover. So the starting salary for a teacher with zero years of experience is forty-four thousand five twenty-five, so we leave the package of starting salary for teachers of zero years of experience, and that is largely due to the teacher decompression, so it's very, very important that we move forward and implement year two of the decompression. So we are competitive as it relates to new hires, and many of our new hires for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year will be coming with zero, five, or ten years of experience at this level.
Ms. Young?
I'm sorry, just to understand, so this incorporates our, this incorporates the plans for the decompression, that?
This is the existing starting salary, but the first year of decompression is for a second year. Correct, correct. So this is after the first year being implemented already.
So, one of the things that, so it looks promising, but the point is, we need to be more than promising, challenging, because this is some approach here, not just a easy decision.
And so, if you notice, Hemerite and Chesterfield are not decompressed at years five and ten for their salary schedules, and we are. Hanover is decompressed, but we are still above their salary pay for the first starting So moving on, where we stand from a benefits perspective, what you see is coverage for an employee with employee-only coverage. Those totals are inclusive of the locality costs, and then the cost to the employee for what they pay for their benefits, and this is the monthly cost. So Richmond Public Schools, and I'll scroll back so you can see, Richmond Public Schools right now has a higher employee cost contribution at the employee-only level. We're right around the same as Chesterfield, at about sixty dollars per month for the employee contribution to their benefits. However, most of our employees do have family coverage, and so when we look at the numbers for family coverage, our employee contribution is significantly lower than our counterparts at four hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents for family coverage. So again, we are definitely comparable, we're leaving the pack as it relates to how much employees are paying out of pocket for their benefits, comparable to our neighboring districts.
This, Madam Chair, we're going briefly, this is one of the areas that when I got here, was very sore, one, with changing health plan, the version that we get on, we told our teachers, benefited our teachers a lot, so we had no reason why salaries need to be higher, because they absorb this part of it, too, in the version six.
So as we talk about making sure employees are aware of what their value is as an employee outside of just their compensation, and we look at something called the employee value proposition, so what that means is, an employee value proposition is a set of associations and offers, and so for example, pay, benefits, and whatever things we might have need. In return for the skills, capabilities, and experience an employee brought into the organization. And so, what we're going to start doing this year is educating our employees on their total reward system, and what their value is to RPS as an employee outside of just their compensation. And so, the district is going to focus on this strategy as recruitment and retention strategy, so it's going to be their total value, not just the pay. And they'll start to receive annual statements effective the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, they're going to be available online via employee self-service. So probably the first go-round will send them out to everyone, so that they'll get a paper copy of them, and then we move forward, they'll be able to access their information online via employee self-service. So we just want to make sure that we have a good balance between what the employees feel is their value related to their pay, and what their value is related to their benefits, not just their health insurance, but also retirement benefits, access to employee access programs, which we'll talk about, sorry, employee assistance programs, which we'll talk a little bit more about as we move forward. And again, this is going to require a lot of, to give it to education for our employees, so that they're aware of what their value is. We know that they don't have a lot of visibility to what their value is up to, and to their benefits, and how much they're actually paying out of pocket for their benefits. So to talk a little bit more about the TRS system, so here are the different components of the TRS system, we've got the compensation, which I've already talked about, their base pay, their incentives, the decompression, for example, their benefits, their health plans, their disability income, paid time off, which is considered a benefit, a lot of employees don't know that, but it is a benefit. In addition, the work-life experience, so work-life initiatives, and wellness programs, which we do have, and a lot of our employees don't know that we have wellness programs. Their appraisal process, career growth, and training and development, so the access to online training via our lead system, all of these things are benefits to our RPS employees, they're just not aware of what that is, and so we're going to make sure that in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, that we bring some visibility to that.
Dr. Sibby?
What do we have on base, to say, to the teachers, and mentor teachers, especially the new ones?
So we do have the new teacher institute, we also have new teacher mentorship programs, which are, that is under Dr. Curry, in the Office of Professional Development, that doesn't necessarily reside under Human Resources, but we do have teacher mentor programs, and I'll be happy to get some information and share that with you, I don't have any on that today, but I will share that with you.
When will that place?
I'm sorry?
When will that, please, start?
So, all of those things are currently in, in place right now. Dr. Curry is moving to the front, we just want to go there. But, so we have new teacher institute, and we have that through the, started in the beginning of the school year, where we offer multiple varieties of professional development, as well as their orientation to their benefits and all those kinds of things, and we have sessions with them throughout the course of the school year. We also have coaches, mentor coaches that are working with new teachers, we don't have nearly enough, but we do have mentor coaches, and they work with them in a variety of things that have to do with pedagogy, content, even how to hold a parent-teacher conference. So, and, and classroom management, all those things, but here's Dr. Curry, right, he was on that.
All the coaches, other educators as well, on that outside.
Now, I'm having from the back, the question was about new teacher approaches and mentors, and what do we have?
So for new teachers, we begin in August with the New Teacher Institute. And that is a three- or four-day training that we have for all teachers who are doing at Richmond Public Schools. Zero experience, those who have had experience teaching in other locations or state, as well as those who may have retired and returned to Richmond. Our focus is on making sure that they understand our evaluation system so that we give them opportunities to begin putting together their portfolios that they'll need as employees in Richmond Public Schools. We focus on classroom management and the culture of Richmond Public Schools so they understand what this urban environment is like. Our trainers are, and this is a collaboration with our curriculum and instruction office as well, because we do want to introduce them to our curriculum. And we try to make sure that they have some tools and lesson plans when they come in those first few weeks of school. We give them resources. And then throughout the year, we follow up with monthly mentor training. So they do have school-based mentors for every teacher who is zero experience. We pair them with a master teacher within RPS. We try very hard to pair them with someone within the same content area or grade level. When that isn't possible in their building, because that mentor does need to have three years of experience. We do work very closely to get someone who lives in a school close to them. We ask that they, that the mentor work with a zero experience teacher daily, at least twenty minutes. And most of them work with them much longer than that to do demonstration teaching, help them with their lesson planning, and those issues that arise. For teachers who come in that are more than zero experience, we team them up with a buddy. Because even though they may have taught, we still want them to be successful in Richmond Public Schools and understand what our culture is, what our curriculum is, and what our expectations are. So we do those, we make sure we do that. Throughout the year, we do have mentor training and topics that follow up with what they've done. New Teacher Institute. So again, we do do classroom management, instructional strategies. And we often have those sessions taught by master teachers in Richmond Public Schools. And we have teams do that. So if they see practitioners actually doing the training and it's someone that they can call on afterwards, ability to go in and monitor to ensure that they are following through for understanding what's going on. I believe I came in as Dr. Kane was talking about instructional coaches. We have new teacher support liaisons who work in our mentor program, who are retirees and becoming a support our teachers. Our instructional coaches or career coaches are through the Richmond Teacher Residency Program. And we have them based on the content. So they are content specialists, and their primary purpose is to go in and support our new teachers. They go in weekly to observe and provide feedback, and they complete a collaborative log about what works, what doesn't work, and next steps. Not only do they work with our residents, they also work with our non-residents. And that's the beauty of having them as part of our, you know, part of, that's to have our support for new teachers. So we have them in content areas, science, we have science, math, social studies, history, and English, as well as the secondary in elementary, exceptional ed, career coaching work with our teachers. Additionally, I said we have mentors that work with zero experience and as part of the resident program. We have clinical resident coaches who is a master teacher who works with our new teachers during the year.
So they also want that point? Give all the support in reference to certification?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Carlson?
How many, how many teachers do we have?
Just under two thousand.
Okay, so...
Three thousand, sorry, just under three thousand.
And of the possible three thousand, how many would we consider have zero? How many would be four and a half?
Like three hundred and forty to three hundred and fifty?
So we got a new force, we got new teachers, how many would be new teachers?
So I would say, just as a clarification, we had about three hundred and fifty new teachers who came in. And of those, probably half of them were zero experience. Because even if they...
She answered the new hire.
New hire, yes.
So she didn't answer the new hire.
Right.
All of those have totally new, well, experience.
New teachers, oh, yeah. And it's the one for two.
Zero experience?
About a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty.
How many of them, so all of them were zero experience?
Yes, as one of our state requirements, we have to ensure that they are paired with a mentor. And because the teachers, we want them to be with a master teacher, someone who really understands instruction. But the three years with Richmond Public Schools is key. Sometimes in a building, we don't have a teacher who fulfills that qualification, so it may not be a one-to-one relationship. In a very few instances, we have two new, two zero experience teachers with one mentor. We try to establish that as much as we can.
Well, the, of our total, how many of our teachers have been zero to five range? Eighteen to five range, and then all of each school? Seventy percent of each zero five?
I do have that information, I can share with you in the weekly report. I don't have it here.
So after the first week, so I'm a new teacher, I get a warrant, and it was just for my first year. And then after my first year, do I get a pay buddy? No.
No?
Or I had, or I had after my first year?
Unfortunately, we don't have anything formally after the first year. But because of the relationships that are built often, then new teachers are still working with that mentor. And as I say, we have new teachers supporting the A-consegnant go in and continue to work with those teachers. Because of the residency program and the model of the residency program and if it truly is a best practice, is to be with a new teacher at least two or three years. So our career coaches follow our residents for two years, pick up a zero experience or a new to Richmond teacher, but they also support, they continue to support that second-year teacher. Not with the same intensity, but they don't just let them go. So we try to build that in.
And Ms. Carlson?
With the New Teacher Residency Program, how many teachers do we give from that program?
I think, just about thirty each year. And right now, with the selection day in fall, we have thirty who have submitted to come to Richmond next year. We've got another selection day, March thirty-first. And we have, right now, as of last Monday, there were fifteen people who had been invited, and we anticipate because of the application and the deadline isn't until March eighth, we anticipate having more people invited to selection day, March thirty-first. So we're anticipating more, hopefully more. We're happy to share any reports on that data.
So would that information also include, like, teachers that have, new teachers that have been hired through the Teacher Residency Program? Do we have the data as far as retention?
Yep, so we track them through the program, and we have data on the retention of the RTR participating.
Ms. Carlson?
That would be great, but I've already got a lot of seen retention, not just the zero to five, the numbers, but five, ten, ten plus. I wrote down total in Richmond Public Schools. We're very, we also have retention, not just the autism retention. Let's see, we're on the version, right? Look at our retention, it's easy, but not costly.
It is, so we track that anyway, as a part of our key performance indicators. I can't be I A'd, so we can't just...
Soon as, Dr. Sabin, you have a question? Another question. So the Teacher Residency is through a partnership with VCU.
Correct.
What other partnerships do we have about surrounding universities such as J Union, J State, University of Richmond? Because these are schools that's right in the vicinity. Students are well-informed or aware of the demographics, you know, the makeup of the city.
We don't have a formal partnership, but we work very closely with them, with our students. First, with practical placement. We work very closely to have their students come in and work with our teachers when they're early on, being interested in teaching. So they, we work to place them in schools and with teachers. Again, with master teachers can really tell them about the urban experience and give them some experience. And then with our student-teacher program, we place, again, we place student-teachers from those universities, and they go out and encourage them to be part of Richmond Public Schools. And we share that information with Human Resources. And they go out and recruit and talk to them, and we visit them to encourage them to become Richmond Public Schools employees.
Dr. Sabin?
Do you have data on the number of teachers you get from each university?
Yes, so that information was shared in the Recruitment and Retention Report that was in the weekly report. It had a breakdown of the number of hires that we got from each of the career fairs that we attended. We do recruit very heavily at Virginia Union, recruit at Virginia Commonwealth University, University of Richmond, Virginia State. And so in the other report that you received, there is a huge attachment within that document that shows.
I do recall that, but how far we need, you can't, I don't know, we reached out to various schools outside of Virginia?
We do. And so if you look within that plan, there's a recruitment calendar, which outlines all of the school districts that we will be participating and visiting this year. And so we don't just stay within Virginia, we go to North Carolina, we go to Pennsylvania. We have plans to visit Texas this year. We're looking to try and get some of the foreign language endorsements in recruiting. So that whole calendar is available to you. We'll continue to be updated as we add more recruitment fairs and more universities that will be visiting this year.
You also go and visit DC as well, here?
We do. And there are two or three schools listed that will be visiting in Washington, D.C. I'm happy to share an updated recruitment calendar with you.
So Ms. else, this information, updated information will be provided in this week, weekly report?
So the recruitment calendar gets updated weekly. And so I'll, as updates are beginning to be being made, I'll update in the weekly report. So if there's a change, I will make sure to include that in the weekly report.
Student representative, Ms. Paul?
Hi, speaking of foreign languages, I attend human high school on Calhoun. I know that at our school right now, there's a high dropout rate for our, I think, Latinos and Hispanics. And I think one of those reasons may be because some of them do not speak English. Is there anything that could be set up so that there can be more teachers that can help them? I mean, we have translators, but I'm not sure if they can, like, follow each student's class. So do you guys look at how many diversity in the schools and about the ratio for English-speaking teachers to the students that don't speak English?
We absolutely do, that's a fantastic question, thank you for bringing that up. And so foreign language is one of our critical shortage areas. And so we do have targeted recruitment efforts around ESL teachers in English as a Second Language and ELL, English Language Learning, teachers with that endorsement. They're in high demand, but in shortage, and that's across Virginia. But we do have some targeted resources to try to reach out and find candidates for those, for that particular issue. And I know exactly what you're speaking of at human high school.
Yes.
Which is why I'm going to Texas, and hopefully to Puerto Rico. We have some targets, we might be able to get down to Puerto Rico, be able to do some. It really depends on what universities that we can translate their endorsements to, but we are looking at it in Texas and Puerto Rico.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we, excuse my ignorance, but do we have any kind of compensation package that accommodates persons that are fluent in a second language? In other words, do we have incentive, incentive pay for this person? Or is that something perhaps that could invite my good colleagues to, et cetera? Because I concur with Paulette's various stupid assessments, and you said well, I want to hear.
We know right now, remember one meeting I talked about the fact that this is something we could do to a candidate, because I stipend them all. The protections we had, the presence, stipend of three thousand dollars. So obviously, we're flying, and we're teaching in various areas of the United United States. So that's something that we have discussed, but we might have to get funding to go with it and have to go forward to the whole way as far as possible. We do need to provide resources to support our staff. Because we have certain major acquisition programs, and the district are actually paying for it.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett. And I like that a lot, but I am mindful of, like all things, scarcity of resources. I would have prefaced this in some of our conversation at the time, but I would really love to further belabor the point. But as it relates to what Paulette introduced, some kind of assessment, we're all mindful of our Hispanic or Latino, Latina population increasing in scope at Richmond Public Schools. And also know that it's really good work projecting what its demographics may look like in our schools. But I'm curious if we've done, if we have tied that in with how many teachers, how many teachers that perhaps will need in an ESL capacity? And that's not the right way to say it, I don't understand what I'm trying to, just so we could bludge it out. Because I'd be very interested in exploring that feature, I do the stipend's approach, that's your reference?
Would you like to send me also the, the cost of it?
Dr. Curry, was just that I mentioned a couple of initiatives that we have. Right, in terms of trying to help our employees be able to communicate with our Spanish-speaking parents and students, we have offered a way to the Spanish within courses to our employees. And this is in partnership with the Hispanic Chamber. We have done it for school staffs, for sixth school staffs. We've done it openly, or had open enrollment across the district. We've done it for our transportation department. So we recognize the need, and we're trying to bring those courses to them. And through, you talked about VCU and some of our partnerships with universities. We've also had courses to teach teachers, some ESL strategies, the side-off strategies, which are instructional reading strategies that work for all students, and we offer courses in that, or hopefully this as well.
Ms. Carlson? Well, this is a comment and question. I think, I can't speak for all my colleagues, but it's very troubling, I'm very busy, so we can't even have our teachers. And I see the new talent acquisition strategies, but it's kind of like tactics as opposed to strategies. And maybe there's a lot of, too. My concern is, well, it's a question too. One, Puerto Rico, is there some strategic reason why we're one there as opposed to Philadelphia, which has an urban population like Richmond has? And perhaps would enlighten us as a board, of course, to understand what are best practices in teacher recruitment, and how is Richmond using best practices to fill some of these hobby concerns?
So Philadelphia is on our recruitment plan. We have two schools targeted in Philadelphia that will be attending, as well as a larger conference which brings many school districts in Philadelphia together into one conference, and Richmond Public Schools will be attending that. So it's not just Puerto Rico, again, that's just an addition, something that we had thought about in the past. In addition to the districts that were already visiting, so Philadelphia is targeted as part of our recruitment strategy. And as far as practices, so a lot of the information that I've gathered and I'm going to share with you, and that I will continue to share in the weekly report, is based on best practices, not just from... best practices, not just from our surrounding school districts, but from urban school districts that are similar to Richmond Public Schools. So for example, Washington DC or Philadelphia or Detroit, or you know, some of the districts that are a lot similar to us as far as demographics. So this does kind of tie in. And we're not quite there yet, but we're moving in the right direction as it relates to our recruitment strategy.
Could we, Professor Page, could we be provided some place to be informed about these best practices? I'm so grateful, I wonder about how ready to be, I don't know if you guys know that, but just to make sure that we're setting policies that support these best practices in recruitment. Because candidly, in my district, I get a lot of feedback from folks who say they've probably become a part of the school system, be teachers, and concerned about how they're responsive and this and that sort of thing. So I just need to be able to explain to them how to be responsive, what our strategies are, what are the specific recruitment goals that we're setting, and how we look to.
Captain?
One of the streets is high rate, 2.1% of urban setting, actually not being set at a high rate. So we have to put it in perspective when we're talking about it's a high rate. If you look across the country, urban settings are the ones that are most challenging and attractive. And I'm going to tell you, we're addressing one. We're above the market right now. The one we're losing is the culture and climate. Our facilities, our instructional environment, you know, when you walk in, you see a chalkboard still in classroom, technology resources, all those are contributing factors to us trying to compete. So here in Philadelphia, and you talk about Philly and Detroit, they're being targeted now because they're having challenges with some of their culture and climate in all states now. And though they are, Detroit is struggling. Puerto Rico was added because one of our surrounding jurisdictions that had success, we gave teachers who were fluent in second language. So that, and who also can come to universities there that can cross the map over to universities in the state. So we have to look at ability to certification also. Like they're going to North Carolina this year because North Carolina does not have Richmond County teachers. So we're targeting places where we also get hits to find that there's salaries are lower and probably Washington as well on North Carolina. And they're starting more sets of new teams in place. Hopefully, we're having drops in places that we've gone because we're not getting the numbers or the money to spend against. So some of your report I've got to that, it shows low numbers, so we're acquiring one or two people, just the money it takes for us to send a team. We're going to try Texas this year because of the population, the teachers, but all of them can't afford it yet. But they're struggling, but we also talk about geographical location, are they likely to relocate? If they move here, is Texas going to be a little bit of a stretch? But we're going to try it because of the saturation, the teachers, will they actually relocate? We're trying to figure out, see if they're still attracting relocation issues.
That's, just understand, like Puerto Rico, when folks in triptile are saying they're trying to get the schools, so.
But that's targeted for specific population of the ELL, of the second language acquisition.
Dr. Sweeney?
I venture to say that you've had a lot of success going to New York, and that population of.
So success is relative. We haven't had much success in getting people willing to relocate from New York to Virginia.
Ms. Carter? Thank you, Chairwoman Page. Can you see any projections yet in terms of our meaning, how many teachers we're going to be?
So at this present time, we are getting back the letters of intent from all of our teachers in the buildings. HR is collecting and evaluating that data. And so in the next few weeks, we will know, generally speaking, what we can anticipate for vacancies. However, teachers do have until June 15th to actually submit a resignation. So we anticipate that those numbers are going to change, even based on the letters of intent, that could change because they do have until June to actually reside. And so we can do projections and we can kind of get an idea from the letters of intent, but of course, that can change. So we'll give you an update probably around mid-April, once all that information is gathered. Then we'll have to give another update after we actually hit that June 15th deadline.
Ms. Cosby? This might be a question for Dr. Perry. So we have this relationship with VCU, with the new teacher evaluation program. I know you've mentioned, and Chairwoman Page talked about some of our other schools. Have we looked at any data to see in terms of performance, which programs tend to be the better for points for our additional, whether it's VCU, whether we have teachers in the Asian Union, or have we been in the.
And of those, we do look at that. Now, as part of the RTR brand, they do track performance data and know students are doing well. We have some other universities that we feel have strong programs as well. We have developed a relationship with Longwood, so we're getting some good traction with some of the student-teachers and the work that they're doing with us. And we pretty much just take the ones who have an interest in coming to Richmond Public Schools. Very bald, when we're getting some good response. I guess I better mention William and Mayor. You know, we are working with them as well. Virginia State and Virginia Union work very closely with us, with their students, to make sure that they're being successful. And, you know, we're having some success with them as well.
Okay, so I'll move through to the rest of the information. So I wanted to talk briefly about our employee assistance program because this is new for Richmond Public Schools this year. We do have a new vendor, which is Cigna for our EAP. And that program is extremely valuable to our employees, is at no cost to the employees. And we know that the culture and climate is one of the number one reasons our employees are leaving the district. And so we want to see what we can do to help and impact on that. So the EAP offers several wonderful services to improve effectiveness and assist employees and their dependents and anyone that's in the household, which is really important. Because we do understand that stressors do not always originate at school. Sometimes people are bringing what's happening at home to school. And so we want to make sure that they have access to those resources that are available to them via the PAT. So those services range everything from face-to-face individual counseling sessions, legal assistance, financial planning, parenting, elder care, pet care resources, identity thefts. They also have wellness seminars and management trainings. There's a catalog of over 150 topics. And so what we're proposing for 2017 is that, A, we survey our workforce to understand what the needs of the district are as it relates to wellness, how informed our employees are about our wellness programs. And then we're going to do a targeted communication campaign for awareness. And then we're going to go into the buildings, into the schools, and do some EAP seminars for all RPS employees. So this will be a part of not only professional development, but we'll offer other occasions for employees to come and participate in these wellness seminars. We have incentives that we can offer them. Some are monetary, some are more performance-based. These sessions will be conducted by licensed clinicians and professional speakers. The topics are researched and developed by experts in their field. And so they'll target things like stress management, how to manage employee behaviors. There'll be some training for managers and principals on how to do employee evaluations. What do you do when you have employees who may be not performing well? So all of these resources are available via the EAP at no cost to RPS. And finally, I want to talk about just the strategies that we're going to be implementing for 2017, 2018. So we know that we have an increased presence on social media. We aren't currently recruiting on social media. That will change moving forward. So we will use all of our social platforms later on. For teachers. For teachers, we're going to be targeting for Instagram, Facebook, all those platforms where we know a lot of our younger candidates are looking to get information. We've got new branded marketing materials. We're very lucky to get a grant from the Office of Grant Management to give us some money to put forward for new marketing materials. And so we've targeted making sure that the takeaways are valuable. So we'll be giving away flash drives that have information about Richmond Public Schools, that has information about the city of Richmond, why this is a great place to live, why this is a great place to work, so we'll be able to take that away. We are employing on-the-spot employment offers and contingent contracts. So we'll bring in our licensed specialists with us on recruitment trips. We're also taking principals with us to be able to do on-the-spot interviews. So for example, we visited Virginia Union on last week. We were able to offer three contingent contracts to teachers right there on the spot, get them to sign on and come join us for the 2017, 2018 school year. We're at VCU, starting today for the next three days. And we'll be doing the same thing. We've got interviews already set up and lined up. And so hopefully, we'll get some great candidates out of that. We'll be able to offer some contracts right there on the spot. In addition, we have our Critical Shortage Retiree Program. So that is in partnership with the Virginia Retirement System and the VDOE. We're offering for retired RPS employees to come out of retirement and teach at RPS with no impact to their retirement benefits, so they're able to keep their retirement benefits as well as teach at RPS. We've got about 20 viable candidates that we're evaluating right now. Many of them are still licensed. And so we're able to place them in our critical shortage areas. And that's a benefit to them because they are able to retain all of their retirement benefits as well as come back and teach at RPS.
Ms. Vallo?
Thank you very much for all this information. Would you mind going back to slide with the proposed 2017 actions?
Yeah.
So I see this survey workforce piece, and it seemed that that was pretty much related to EAP benefits.
Yep.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that we're going to be, you know, informing our teachers about what these benefits are. As we've noted, and I think a lot of us have been talking about it over the past year, so culture and climate does seem to be a really, probably one of the key, the key reason that we seem to have some issues with getting teachers. So I think that this is a good start. I'm glad to see this. But I really do want to encourage us as a board and the administration to really dig in over the next few months and the remainder of the year to get a better grasp of what's, what we can do to encourage our teachers to stick around a little more and also make sure that we've got a really data-driven approach to doing that. So I think this might be a great fodder for potential, for some potential work sessions in the future to get some other stakeholders involved. I think, I think this is a good start for the proposed 2017 actions, but I would like to see plans to interview teachers who are leaving the district or have interviewers, interview teachers who are leaving the district to have an idea of what some of those types of issues are and just to make sure that we can really see if there are any loading group up that we can certainly capitalize on.
So as part of our exit survey process, we do offer the opportunity, if they want to meet one-on-one or they want to have an information sharing session, I don't want to just do the link online, but I want to come into HR and talk about why they leave. We do offer that opportunity as part of our exit process.
And do you have an idea about how many folks actually can take advantage of that opportunity?
So far, none, but we do offer. We'll continue to push that. We'll also continue to push having those who are exiting so they don't get any notice to leave that day and they don't come back, to try to find a strategy to still connect with them even after they leave the district, whether that's a home email address or a phone call, to see if we can still gather that data. Because a lot of times, they're leaving, they're leaving right then and there. We don't have an opportunity to catch them before they leave out of the building. So we're trying to push strategies to still get that data from them even though they leave out of the district.
Ms. Vallo?
I'm sorry. So also, teachers who aren't renewing contracts, just to have an idea of if there's any particular reason.
Yes, so as a part of the letters of intent, I don't know if you all had a chance to see the form, we sent it out electronically, the link to the exit survey was on the form to say if you do not intend to return for the 2017, 2018 school year, please click here and take the exit survey to give us information as to why you don't intend to return.
Sure. And I don't mean to belabor it, but I think, I'm hopeful that we can come up with really constructive ways to get this feedback, to make sure that we've got meaningful feedback. Sometimes I'm worried, I just had to take a survey at work, actually, and it was under 77 questions, and I can say, and necessarily give each of them the 77. Point suffice to say that, that, I think we've also seen situations where we're not sure we're getting feedback that aligns with the perceptions and realities from what we're hearing from our teachers. So I just want to make sure that we're looking for ways to encourage that information sharing.
Ms. Carter? I just want to end off what Mr. Vallo said. Certainly, we're a diverse organization, a part of the exit processes and exit surveys. So I'm a little biased about the policy structure. It is required, if any circumstance possible, to sit down with someone before they leave. They get their keys, they, you know, they sit at their desk, and someone gets to talk with them. Because that feedback is not meant to indict, but certainly to strengthen our overall program. And that's a privilege for us, identifying how we can make things more supportive of our teachers and increase our retention. It's not a catch-up concept, it's an information sharing. And I've never been part of an organization and didn't have that as a.
Well, it's, you can request one, you can't require an employee to do it. It's a confidential process, so you can't require an employee to sit down and talk or even to take the survey. But certainly, we encourage and we push and we ask multiple times for them to complete the survey.
Ms. Els?
Yeah.
I have another question. Retiree, former?
Yes.
What's the areas that, I guess, shortage, the most?
Shortage, yeah. So it's the areas that are identified by the Virginia Department of Education? And so this information is also in the report that we shared with you via the weekly report. So the areas that are identified by VDOE for critical shortage are exceptional education, elementary education, pre-K through six, middle education, six through eight, career and technical education, English, foreign languages, mathematics, grade six through 12, school counselor, health and PE, and history, social science.
For this district?
That is for Virginia now. So we have to follow the guidelines that are for Virginia.
Right, okay. I mean, I understand that, but as far as RPS, where are our employees?
They pretty much align with what VDOE says, absolutely. For RPS, there's library, media, and reading specialists and science are also identified for us. However, we have to be careful about placing retirees in those critical shortage areas because they are not identified by VDOE. So there are some additional guidelines that we have to meet to be able to place a retiree in those positions.
Same, because the question is tied to entirely the coverage, we have to follow state, even if ours is different. They can't qualify for that because it's tied to DRS. The only way you can be an exception, when you try to work on them, because we talked about, each state has a turn in to the fans where their shortages are. That then is declared a shortage by the state, you're booked and closed. The only way you get an exception to that is where they held them, where they bought three challenged districts with teachers. We talked about an issue that some of all are different, the rest of the state. So we're figuring if we can show that we have less than three.
Less than three qualified candidates apply to the position. That's the only way they will be able to qualify and excrete.
If they're found hate and work to not endanger the person retiring. But there's a point about being careful, that we screw up, it's just less than someone retiring. So we're very guarded about screwing it up.
Excuse me, before you continue, let us check in with our student representative at home. Do you need to leave homework?
Quite sure what time it is. I wasn't told what time this is concluded. Do you know?
I'll be here for a while. I don't know if you're going to, you'll be here for a while. You may not.
Yeah, I told my girlfriend she's going to a meeting, but I don't think she, thought it was going to be.
Don't feel bad.
Yes. Well, thank you guys for having me. Well, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Deostral, as well.
Unless there are additional questions, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Next time, we three, when you're sixty, we'll report on board and we'll submit to the BSDA evaluation evaluation workshop.
Ms. Owen? We have three board members to attend the BSDA superintendent evaluation workshop, Dr. Sweeney, Ms. Cosby, and Ms. Owen. Ms. Owen has reported.
Thank you. The three of us reviewed the state requirements for evaluation of superintendents and we compared that rubric to the one used by Richmond's award. It was very enlightening, and we feel that we should continue to work on analyzing and refining our process, possibly to include some formative evaluations during the year. And we suggest that the three of us, we'd be as an ad hoc committee to work on. And we suggest that the three of us remain as an antipub committee to work on this and present our findings.
Thank you. We look forward to next steps for that process.
Next time, we'll send a call in budgetary items. We'll consider wanting to see an update on vandalism facilities and CIP budget.
In state, we're here in the middle, in the middle of the page, without me standing.
Okay, no more way to really put it. Three things that I wanted to cover in this presentation tonight. One is vandalism that goes on inside of our schools. This year, we've had four hundred and forty-nine incidents of vandalism in school buildings and school buses. That relates just to windows, windshield, bus seats, and door locks. We have spent right now ninety-one thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars on those events. Annualizing that out, we anticipate will be about six hundred and seventy-three incidences because the spring is a little bit higher for us in the beginning of school year. And we'll end up having about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of damage. A year ago, we were at two hundred and ninety-one and we spent about thirty-five thousand dollars on those incidences. Those are dollars that come out of that maintenance repair fund. As you recall, it's about one point five million dollars in that fund. So that's a rather significant portion of that fund being used just to handle items that relate to vandalism. To the extent we are able to, we will seek repayment from apparent or guardian. But, you know, that's not something that we have a high success rate in trying, but we do try to recoup our funds. Update on CIP, you can see we scheduled out the year that we've had funds left over. At this moment, FY fifteen, we received two supplements from the city, the first was seven million fifty thousand dollars. We have spent all but eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, so it's zero point one two percent on the supplement, which was in addition after the budget had been adopted, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. We spent all but ninety-six dollars of that particular fund. The FY sixteen fund, we got, we received eight million one hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-two. We actually are over and we'll adjust that with our finance department, about five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. And then on FY seventeen, we received five million dollars and we spent all but a hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars, or about three point two seven percent. The next two categories represent special areas. The first one was over at B. Shepherd, that was allocated four million dollars. We, we have available three million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, or ninety-nine percent. We did spend some money over the summer addressing the sump pumps where the gym, and it's because of the floodplain that the school's located in. And we also addressed some other environmental issues. Then, the net last category is the school planning and construction, which is eighteen million dollars. When those funds were allocated to the system, the discussion was that initially those funds would be used to begin the implementation of option five of the Facilities Task Force Facility Need Report. However, if those funds weren't, if there weren't budgeted funds for the construction, then it didn't make sense to begin the design work on buildings that may or may not be constructed. We currently have fourteen point nine million dollars of funds. Those funds today have been focused on the Broad Rock, Green, Reed area where our growth is continuing to occur. We will begin having, trying to find a solution to the problem of Elfar Thompson. Elfar Thompson, our growth that's in the previous Elfar zone is growing. That's causing the overcapacity at Elfar Thompson to continue to grow. George Whitt is also seeing an experience, an increase in their student count. And so those are two areas that, these are funds that would be available to address those particular capacity issues related to that.
Ms. Carter? Outside of new construction, are there other strategies like rezoning to address some building capacity?
Rezoning is a component that will assist so that we don't have further dollars going in, for example, at a Broad Rock or some of the other challenges we have. But honestly, because of the way our, the zones are today and where the growth is and where the empty seats are located, it becomes a pretty significant challenge to do it as a rezoning type approach. We looked at it during the Facilities Task Force side and the consensus was that we needed to do it as a comprehensive where it was rezoning, it was new construction, and it was renovation. It was using all the tools that were available.
So then for school slide, George Mason, Ms. Carter, and Liz, in terms of the most important, do you have just, there are funds right now that would be allocated?
No, we spent, some of the funds are in the school planning on George Mason's past year. We're going in and address a large portion of their mechanical system and nineteen of their classrooms. We replaced the mechanical systems currently in those rooms. The system that was installed there is a design that makes it very difficult for us to empty water out. As a result of that, what happens is those units will accumulate water, it'll go over the top, and then the floor runs out of the depot. So what we had to do is replace those units as well as the flooring, because we've been in nineteen classrooms over the past few months. George Mason has a lot of challenges. And fourteen million dollars would be, I don't know how close that would be to, you know, to, to replace it. It could replace the entire school. Now whether that could make a serious dent into a renovation of that school is obviously something that we could consider.
But, oh, no, ma'am.
Oh, no, ma'am. I'm just saying that, but yes, no, George. George Mason is still a. It's a building that keeps us up at night.
It does. And when you have the water, when you have the mold and that, there are just some serious concerns.
The natural gas, I mean, it's a domino, the gas coming out of that boiler system, it's a domino effect.
I don't think this is a negative problem, but it is a concern. I think it's not to say that we can't even write community resources.
Oh, ma'am.
Can't even more in that school.
No, ma'am.
Just it's not on the priority list right now. It's not at the top, I know it's on the priorities, but the safety factors for our own interests and that's why so much so on this school.
It is that balancing act between classrooms that are needed, you know, for students and, and the safety issues. And, and I can assure you that we will not, you know, make, allow students to be a builder that are affected. So it's something that we monitor regularly and something we will continue to monitor, but we agree with yourself.
Because when you stay balanced, safety versus, there is no balance of safety.
No, it's both, both, well, it is, but there's also the need, you have to have classrooms for students. So, you know, that's why today there's twenty-four modules at Broad Rock. That's why today Green Elementary has nineteen. It's also an issue that both of those schools, the infrastructure's not big enough to handle the load, so we've had to bring in modular dynamics. And so they, they both are significant challenges, but I agree with you. And there's other schools that we've not discussed that have issues that, that also keep us up at night.
I would just suggest, Ms. Carter, that if I had a choice between my child being in a modular unit or a unsafe building, I'd rather have it in a modular. So I, I just think we can't fix this now, but I just wanted on the record that I think we need to rethink our strategy. Because you're hearing about mold issues and gas leaks and the health of the school, and it's just trouble. Dr. Dave?
And then Ms. Young.
I'll just share a footnote. You'll be obviously getting a little bit of a worry. As you know, we started a divisional review of the state part of that review, the facilities. One of the concerns they have had, because there's been all the way back to two thousand two years of reports about what to do to our facilities. And I will tell you that the board is going to come back and I'm going to be strong on planning, strong on the team efforts with comprehensive approach and other capabilities to action. Is what we're, we're basically not going to be in favor of the way that we agree. One of the things that I would just want to more know that, when you talk about Mason, you know, challenges, I'm sure you that if we get to the point that it's totally unsafe, by code, I'll be required to close the building. I mean, just like I did with the Elfar. Problem is, that's not the best way to go about it last minute. And so there is a ton of choices in conversation. I think people have talked about, we have to address, with regards to some of the village also, the cost that it will take to renovate it. We don't have enough funding to do it, so we've got to make some tough choices with the rezoning and the district process and make the best use of the space that we have. Stop the bleeding and throw a big way out to that because we can't really fix it right. The bandit approach is killing us. We, we are, one of the things they go to in the conversation, the whole thing with me is, all they can see right now is that his team is responding to life help, safety issues, and that's all we're doing. We're going to get into proactive part of facility support and teaching.
So, Ms. Carter, just so I can work out a level of view to the next step, if we had to, so if I had to sort of, not to sing them out once too, but I do think this is a myth, we can help the safety of this town. It's the old school and it's.
Today, there's a mental.
So if I had those concerns without drawing a painting on the ground, should I just articulate them so that we can come up with a plan of action?
I, I would encourage, let us, you and I sit down and review it. It also would give me an opportunity to show other schools. There, there's, there's another school right now that comes very close to George Mason. And it's a school that, today, from a pure operating standpoint, gives us the greatest fear because of some issues that we're dealing with in maintaining that building on a daily basis. That if that were to crash, it could cause some significant operational challenges. If, if I could recommend, it's, all right, Chairman, let's sit down and, and we can go through it school by school and, and, but let me not, let me assure you, we take seriously George Mason, and I've said that publicly on tours we've done through the community committees. And, and we take it very seriously.
And also, Ms. Crans, would it help if board members would review facilities, report them again?
We would love to sit down and talk with any board member at any time, any day. Just, just call and we'll let us down.
So, Ms. Carter, that's why I brought it up, the number is not always a sole employment for a priority, and I just wanted to just anyway, you can sort of get that. And it's not at the risk of other schools, because the only school in the world's condition is this one, and it's out of the.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You know, holiday initiates very important conversation for us. And frankly, if I may say this, I think as a board, as a new board, we will fail if we neglect in this first year to initiate a rezoning and consolidation of schools. It's time for us to make some very hard, just hard choices and some tough decisions. And the first, we have got to do it this first year. We can't, cannot, we have to continue to tolerate and condition some of our schools. And in fact, we are bleeding money hand over fist upon account of.
So, Ms. Young and fellow board members, I think we all prefer, but those items are on our to-do list. Rezoning, facilities, strategic plan, superintendency evaluation. I can go on and on, but those items are at the top of our priority list and we need to address. And as we all know, this is nothing new, the conditions of our facilities. If you look at the CIP budget, last ten, fifteen, twenty years, RPS has never received the appropriate allocations to maintain our facilities. Just the basics, the bare basics. So, we all know, but also let me remind, keep, keep track of time. And I know these items are, you know, very, um, informative issues, but just try to be respectful of our time and the staff, and everyone that's here tonight. So, Ms. Young, do you have enough of the time? Should we like to bring up or we can discuss offline? Okay, so we can, just be respectful of time.
So, some custodial challenges. The square footage in the district has remained the same since two thousand ten, about four point seven million square feet of space. Yet, since two thousand twelve to today, we've gone from two hundred and twelve custodians to a hundred and sixty-four. We've reduced our staff by forty-eight to twenty-two point six percent. Our custodians today raise the clean rate to twenty-eight point six thousand square feet a day versus in two thousand twelve, over twenty-two thousand square feet. That's an increase of over sixty-five hundred square feet, or twenty-nine point three percent. Industry standard generally is around seventeen to eighteen thousand square feet. It's obviously a function of your hallway, the classroom, you know, everything that's in a building, but that gives you some general data. Today, the custodial budget's been decreased from four hundred and three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars in FY oh nine to three hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. That could decrease to sixty-eight thousand dollars, or another seventeen point one percent. All of this, it ties kind of on the, on the CIP is that the hole we create, you just can't come out of. You know what I'm saying? In that it gets worse and worse and worse. Our plan of actions are aggressive. Number one, is new custodial hours from during the school day to after the building is done. You can't clean a school building when people are in by the building. That's going to be a shit. Prior to two thousand ten, more custodial hours in the evening. Over time, what's happened is more custodial hours are being used during the school day. An example, you can go into a large elementary school that we have, they have three custodians, those twenty-four man hours in the day. They use sixteen of those twenty-four man hours before the school day ends. You're not going to clean a building that's almost seventy-five thousand square feet with a guy. I don't care how good the person is, I don't care what he put it together, I don't care what chemical he gave it. There's only so much that an individual can do and you're not going to clean the building. You have to clean buildings. That's the only time we can deal when the building's unoccupied. Each school will be provided as the industry calls it a day order. That can be a crew leader or that can be a member of your team. That individual will not have specific cleaning duties because you have students, you're going to work at the direction of the principal, you're going to direct, deal with specific issues that happen during the school day. Which you will in the cafeteria be ensuring that kept, the trash is being picked up, the trash cans are cleaned. And that we are keeping the floor semi-clean during the day, during the, the lunch period. After the lunch period is ended, school unit traditional personnel will wipe down the lunchroom. And then at that point, the, the crew leader will come, start picking the chairs up, and we'll start cleaning the dining room itself, and that's a one-person operation. We will implant, reallocate personnel so that there's a more equitable distribution. Some sites have two custodians where you can get by with one. So we will reallocate some of our personnel to ensure we get the best coverage that we possibly can. We also will ensure, we generally keep all of our positions filled. We don't have a problem from a recruitment standpoint. But, you know, we also will make sure we do keep control and not have vacancies. Continuing our plan of action, we'll develop a scope of work so that we give to each principal basically a contract. That contract will detail our scope of work, so the principal understands what's going to be done daily, weekly, monthly, and on an annual basis, and there's no misunderstanding. We also will do quarterly inspections. Those inspections will be done at two and three in the morning after everything has been closed. in the morning after everything has been closed, um, that's the best time for us to build into the buildings and see how they were, the cleaning was done and make sure that we're, you know, we're good for the next step. Um, lastly, we're going to redo all of our training, um, to make sure that personnel are where the best way to get things done, where it's not so much somebody smarter than somebody else, but it's like if my, my children were, were being recruited, one of the things to get faster, you know, everybody wants to be bigger, stronger, faster, plenty of balls, but a person that coaches Olympic track champions has done it throughout his fifty years of coaching. He said, "I can't teach somebody to run fast, all I can do is teach you how to eliminate wasted motion." And it's the same thing in cleaning a building, it's how to be the most efficient we can be and each building presents its own challenges, so that would be our goal and our task for us to address this, this custodial.
Got it.
Thank you.
Four point zero two, receiving an update on RPS and contract services agreements.
So, board members, this is just a reminder, um, as part of the budget process and to delve and deeper into the budget, um, this is one category that, um, we can look at as possible to find some efficiencies. So, this is just part of, part of the budget process before we adopt the budget.
it's quite a delight to actually talk about an area that's working, uh, that's working well and I'd like to talk about some of the positives that have occurred with our procurement uh, over the last, uh, nine months. Uh, what I handed out to you is a, two lists that had gone out in the weekly update last, Where it's continuing to have technical difficulties, uh, but I would like to talk about these two particular lists, uh, so we could dig deeply, uh, into the potential for these savings, uh, for our contractual services. What I wanted to, to start with was a listing of, of all of our payments to our vendors uh, for twenty-five thousand and greater and it's sorted two ways, one is a summary by the, the vendor, uh, the second one, I tried to give you a listing of, of contract numbers. And what we're attempting to show you, and you can see that it's, um, difficult, is that all of these contracts are on our website, um, but we'll, we'll try to get to that in just a moment. I do want to talk about some successes of, probably at the top of the list, we did a joint procurement with the city, uh, for healthcare and while that is just a particularly positive topic, that we don't think that we're, we're getting our best value, uh, we did negotiate a half billion dollar contract, uh, between the schools and the city, uh, and we are seeing that our healthcare increases are less than half per year of what our neighbors are. So, we're very pleased with the negotiation that we did and I think to the point of this, um, of this topic, um, working through negotiations, contracts, and working through the procurement process, uh, and the bid process, uh, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Does yield, does yield savings. I, I do want to talk about a couple more, uh, procurements that we had, um, one, the outsourcing of our instruction at our alternative school, again, a topic of discussion, um, but the actual savings were real from the, from the staffing, uh, reduced, of course, those savings have been rolled into the eighteen budget at this moment, uh, and, and also something maybe a little closer to home, the demolition of, um, El Cart Thompson, we thought that that would come in, uh, based on industry estimates of over a million dollars, that number is in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, again, the, the process, uh, that, um, Mr. Ward and his, his teams bring to us is working, they have, uh, they've performed more than forty-five procurements, uh, in this school year, uh, we've got fourteen on the table, uh, to, to complete, uh, through the course of this school year, uh, initially, uh, during the summer. So, this, this process is working well, uh, I, I don't want to mislead the board in any way to think that, um, we can go out and renegotiate sixty million dollar worth of contractual services, but that doesn't mean that on, ongoing basis, we can't continue to look at contracts. So, I'm going to, I'm hoping our technology's going to work, um, I'm, I'm just going to pick a, a couple of contracts, um, I'm going to look at EBS Healthcare, it's on the first page in the detail, contract sixty-four thirty-eight. And you'll see that this is main thing on our website, uh, this is, pick the one is app, which is speech, language, pathology services. Um, this at this moment is not available to the general public, it certainly can be, it's just a movement on our website, if, if the board would like for that to happen. Uh, the reason I bring this up to you tonight though, is what I had hoped, is that collectively, while we aggressively renegotiate contracts as they expire, um, if there's anything specifically that is, that catches your attention or you thought about, that you were coming onto the board, that you had questions about, uh, I know a hot topic for, for the last couple of years has been therapeutic day services, we've been over that repeatedly, but, um, as you look through this, if there are specific items, uh, I'm going to show you how you get to this on the website, um, I hope, um, there we go, on, on the face of our, yes, on the face of our website, uh, it is under staff, it's on the very far right, um, and, and then you go down to the little button that says my RPS, and again, we can move this somewhere else to make it easier, uh, and then information and then contract list and, uh, you, you can see that our purchasing manual is there and also our purchasing reference guide for all of our employees is there, but the biggest thing is you can put, uh, any contract number that we have in there and we'll pay what the services are and should you want more information, we'll be delighted to send you a copy of the actual contract. One of the questions that I know that comes up with this is, um, how much do we spend? And that's, that's why I ran this information, many of our contracts, uh, when we're talking about produce purchases, it's how much does it cost per bustle of apples, or when we talk about repaving, it's, it's how many square feet of repaving. So, most of our contracts aren't really fixed price contracts, some are, some are not. Um, even the Camelot contract at, uh, the alternative school, uh, has a, a price breakpoint for the number of students, if we serve more than that number of students, then the price will go. So, and I'm happy to talk about this item tonight, I think this is going pretty well and I certainly understand the board's desire to continue to push this and, and it's our desire that we will push this every day and we'll come back to you as, as often and periodically as you would like with updates on progress we've made with the negotiations and I'd have a little seat for your guidance. In the interest of time, uh, welcome up to an aside of our conversation.
Please, thank you.
Something you need more time at the process, information?
Please call me, email me and, and I'd, I'd love to engage in this, this certainly is an ongoing area and, um, we have sixty million dollars of outsourced services, um, that we actively pursue negotiations of that all the time, um, but that doesn't mean that, that, um, we are the only set of eyes that, that need to be looking at this, so thank you.
Next time, this four point zero, please discuss the boys and girls, but request for a brand, please.
Of course.
So, members of the board, um, previously, we were approached by MLK, by, I mean, by the Boys and Girls Club, and the Boys and Girls Club has been at MLK for the past four years and the district's had a long-term relationship with them. They approached us about obtaining, uh, space, that they could expand their operation, the area, this is a plot of, um, MLK site, here's the entryway to the back of the parking lot, the parcel of land that we're talking about is right here along our baseline, this is an area, as you can see, that has a drawing of a site, when this was being developed by the city, the city, the town was put a health center there and the funding wasn't sufficient to continue with that. This is an aerial view of the site, um, here's our driveway to the back of MLK, here's a parcel of land that we're talking about, here's another view from the street side of the land that we're talking about. Under our facilities plan and our facilities need, we've not identified any real use for that particular parcel of property and so when the Boys and Girls Club approached us about possibly, um, using that property, we entertained this conversation. What they're trying to do is create a program where every high school senior will have a plan for successful life after high school, either through higher education or career and workplace, uh, development, um, they're looking to construct a twenty thousand square foot state of the art facility that will function as a career and college bound center in the evening, um, it will serve approximately five hundred to six hundred as they call club members and it'll be an after-school and summer program in that particular building for eighth and twelfth graders. Um, it will engage in college-ready curriculum and culture with the focus being on the seniors and looking at a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty students, um, they are going to actively work on having those students participate in both internships and externships to give them the work skills necessary to be successful both in college as well as in a career that they choose. The proposed lease term is a twenty-five-year lease, um, that's needed because they're looking to use the new market tax credit from a funding standpoint, which is a financing vehicle, um, and in order to get that kind of credit, um, it would be a dollar per year, they would continue to provide services to RPS, which they do today, and we would continue to work with them to expand those services to RPS. Um, the school board will retain control over the property, so you're not giving up control of the land itself, we're just letting somebody else use that land on a basis. Um, there obviously will be a default provision in that, which we would negotiate, um, and in the event that there would be a default under the lease, that we refer back to the control of the school board at that particular time. Um, the next steps, we will come to y'all as a board, um, our goal is at the March twentieth meeting with, um, subject to the approval of superintendent, with a recommendation for the superintendent's school board chairperson to enter into the lease, subject to these basic terms, um, and we can move forward with the relationship with board members.
Ms. Carron. You mentioned the initial plan of going to help the community, certainly their needs and the community, that is there anywhere else that we could put some sort of healthcare facility on that side or has another side to that?
You can do a healthcare facility in front, another option they looked at, um, was where the school nurse office was supposed to be and there are some things you can do in the front of that building, that building has at the front, a lot of boxes that you could do, and that's ideally for us, when you start doing community, joint use space, if we can have, um, the community coming into the front and there's a separation between community and students and do the front, it's the best avenue.
Ms. Carlson.
Hi, I'm for one, very excited about this project, uh, and I think it falls in there with what we discussed during our, um, retreat or governance training and when we talked about what we've done, our RPS students will look like in the future and having a partner to work with us, we're making sure that we have them in the door of college and career and really create strategies to make that happen, um, there is a lot about this project that is open and I'm just ready to go, it's fine, I'm in the dialogue.
Mr. Young and then Ms. Carr.
Yeah, it, it is very exciting and it also, it also corresponds with the mayor's commitment to increase after-school offerings and, uh, and what we're attempting to do with the compact, uh, so I don't think I'm going to surprise anybody when I share with him, he doesn't disagree with the purpose of the office in order.
I just wanted to add to my D S, I think this is a great example of public cooperation in the profit sector, in the nonprofit sector of publicness, support the needs of the nonprofit cloud, so I agree, so my man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Would you like to have a few words?
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah. Good to hear you have the topic, our honor, President Sead, who was in close contact with Eric Richman, uh, just to echo Mr. Krantz, uh, we're very excited about this project as part of a twenty-five one dollar comprehensive fundraising campaign and we're just going with one one million dollars into it, um, so we do have enough money raised at this point, uh, to begin construction, uh, so working, um, with the city, uh, under official plans, it's assisted with that on permitting and all of that, we want the tax credit piece, uh, we'd like to get that on the backend, obviously, to offset some of our costs, but we'll not make a break in the project, uh, if we're not able to do that. One of the things we're very excited about is obviously, we have a pretty share of partnership in MLK middle school, go down the east end since nineteen ninety-seven, working on construction of the housing authority in Perryville Port, um, and we absolutely want to stand up there quick, uh, in the east end, as well as source, south side and north side, Richmond too, and we feel this is a, a first step in us heading in the direction of really making sure kids stay with us all the way through high school, uh, we have a very large number of firsts to make where we have potentially lose young people as a research, one of our goal is to keep them with us in partnership with many others all the way through high school, aligning with the teacher centers and other offices to make sure our kids do get life ready, it may not do their college bound, but we want to make sure when they leave us and maybe they do, they at least have the basic skills and abilities, if they don't go to college to enter the workforce and gain meaningful wage for local employment, uh, that's one of our priorities. Thank you all very, very much, we support that squad, there's still work to do.
Ms. Carr.
Thank you, I think this is very exciting, for while I have it in front of me, I'd like to say, the only middle school, once two public schools, it does not have a chapter street market, it's El Cart Thompson, so, bump that up.
Thank you, again. Thank you, again.
Thank you very much.
The next time, is that, board action, seeing if I have any transfers, five point zero two, see action, new resources action?
This is me again, I have to excuse me a little bit, I need to... New resources action for who this evening are, the nomination of ten employees, the change of contract of four employees and the transfer of one employee, as an addendum, we have the nomination of one employee.
I need to be accepted, new resources required.
Is this moved by this board in sector five, the... Is this moved by this board and sector five, this follow?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
That is B, in the A.
Yes.
Next is A, zero, the next slide is your second agenda. Who lives in February 13th, but what session, it was the first, the 17th, and there's a distributive, I just asked, I said, for the two firsts.
In correction, so the minutes will be ruled as precision.
Do I have any other questions? Items closed.
Pursuant to the Personnel Section 2.2 dash 3711A1, Student Section 2.2 dash 3711A2, and Legal Section 2.2 dash 3711E7, of the code of Virginia, 1958, I move that the school board and the city of Richmond can be in closed session to discuss prospective visits for employment, the assignment of employment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or recitation, specific public officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of the state, and Employee Matter Number 1617 dash 4, to discuss actual litigation in student matter 1617 dash 1, and to have consultation with legal representation regarding UCR matter 1617 dash 1, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation and litigation process of the school.
Do you have any second? Is this moved, Dr. Smarlow and sector five, Mrs. Carter, we are now in closed.